Hello, everyone. We're going to get started if everybody could have their seats. I'm Joy Kardine. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Dane County and I'm going to be your moderator today. Thanks to everybody for coming. The election, as you know, is April 3rd. Voters will choose three candidates for Monona City Council. The candidates are Brian Holmquist, Jennifer Kur, Andrew Kitslar, and joining us by telephone is Molly Groupie.
Which, I'm sorry, I better interrupt. I'm going to get off my phone.
Good. We will have questions from the audience during the forum and I believe there are cards or pieces of paper over on the table when you entered. You can write your questions on there and please go ahead and pass them down and Will will collect them and get them to me near the hour mark of the forum. Each candidate will be asked all of the same questions. Each will have two minutes to answer with the order of responses being alternated. Written questions from the audience will be accepted. Questions should be issue-based and personal or political attacks will not be read. Please turn off your cell phones so we don't have those interruptions and please hold your applause or responses until the end of the forum. Also, each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement of two minutes and a closing statement of two minutes. So, once we get our candidate who is joining us by telephone online, we will begin. All right, so we will start with the opening statements. You each have two minutes for your opening statement to say whatever you want to say and we'll start with Brian.
Sure. So, I'm excited to be here today and thrilled to have an opportunity to be able to answer questions that people have. Bless you. And, you know, I would rather spend most of my time answering your guys' questions and less about positions I have because I see this job really as a volunteer job. It's a job that is a lot of problem solving, working with a lot of other residents. So, I'll leave it at that. I thank the media group for putting this on and the League of Women Voters for helping host. That's it.
All right. Jennifer?
Well, I wanted to say thank you for coming today on this beautiful day. I want to thank Will and the Monona Community Media for live streaming and putting this event on. I'm glad to see so many familiar faces in the room, although there are some of you that I don't know. And for those of you that I don't know, I'd like to kind of introduce myself to you. I moved to Monona three and a half years ago. I am a graduate of UW Stevens Point. I have a poly sci and public administration major. I've been working for 17 years in higher education. The last nine I've been in research administration. I was appointed to the council in May when Mayor O'Connor gave up her seat on the council and I was chosen from a field of seven to do that. In the last 10 months, I've been able to talk to many of you, learn a lot from you. I've been working hard to kind of get up to speed and I feel like I'm just getting started so I'm hoping to be able to continue on the council to get to work.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you. Thank you, Monona Community Media, for hosting this. Thank you, Joy. Thanks, everyone, for showing up. As I said, my name is Andrew Kitslar. I was born and raised in Monona. I was a lifeguard, umpire, paper boy, and of course I participated in a number of recreation activities in the city. Quite simply, it was a great place to grow up. After college, I graduated from Ripon College and I moved out east. I worked in higher ed as a fundraiser and I'm currently working at UW Foundation fundraising for UW Madison. While out east, I also worked in county government right outside of Philadelphia and while there, I also helped assist with implementing the county's first zero-based budgeting. But more importantly, this county experience opened my eyes that local government is really where you can have the greatest impact on our community and it gave me the encouragement and enthusiasm to run for local office potentially one day. My wife and I, when we decided to move back to amazing Monona, I knew I wanted to get involved so I volunteered and was appointed to Public Safety and Sustainability Committee as well. Of course, in my first term, I learned a great deal about the variety of facets of local government. I have or I am currently serving on the Parks and Rec Board, Library Board, Community Development Authority, Tourism Commission, Sustainability Committee, and Public Safety Committee. I believe in some way you can see my imprint on each of these committees either by through their actions. Overall, I enjoy serving. I enjoy addressing problems. I enjoy considering actions the city can make to make us an example for others and I enjoy doing the work. I'm running for reelection because I can and I want to do more with an overall emphasis on pushing Monona to lead by example. I look forward to sharing my priorities this afternoon, answering your questions and hearing about what you believe the direction of Monona should be as well. So, thanks again.
Thank you. And Molly?
Yes. Again, I want to echo all the other elders and their thanks to Monona Community Media for hosting us today and especially for accommodating me while I'm out of town. A little bit about myself, I'm an early childhood speech-language pathologist. I work in the Wanaquay Community School District. This is my seventh year. I'm currently serving on the Friends of the Monona Senior Center Board as well as the Landmarks Commission. I'm a very active and longtime member of my local teachers' association on which I currently serve as a political action coordinator. And as Jen mentioned, after Mary O'Connor was elected last spring, I attempted to apply for the interim elder person position and after I came very close, I felt very inspired to keep going. So, last fall, I participated in an Emerge Wisconsin training for progressive female candidates to really prepare for my campaign and get ready to go. So, I've been actively knocking doors since the middle of January. I've accrued a number of endorsements from community members and other organizations and I feel very proud of how hard I've been working during this campaign and very much looking forward to speaking with all of you today and telling you more about what I can bring to the table if I'm elected to city council.
All right. Thank you. We'll reverse the order now with the first question. And the first question is, what do you love about the city of Monona? Molly?
Dan and I, my husband Dan and I, have lived in the Madison area for about a decade and we moved to Monona in 2013 because we were looking for our first home, a quiet space with a variety of different, you know, ages and abilities in the city, access to downtown, to the lakes, to city parks. And that's really what I love about Monona is it's a small town but very accessible to areas around it. I think we have a growing, a diverse array of businesses and green spaces that can really attract a lot of people, including my friends and I who have sort of like our own little community in Monona. But I think, you know, another great gift of Monona has just been in my campaigning, I've met so many people who have been lifelong residents, living now in houses in which they grew up, where their parents raised them, and I think it's really just a testament to all that Monona has to offer and its excellent services and just the feel, the good school district. I mean, there's just so much that it offers on sort of a smaller and more neighborhood-like scale. So, I think all told, that's really what makes me enjoy and want to live in and serve Monona.
Andrew?
Yeah, so similarly, I mean, the quality of life in Monona is, I think, second to none. I mean, people move here and they don't move out. It's a very attractive community. You know, it's welcoming. Our quality of services are amazing for a population of about 8,000. You know, we have an amazing pool, amazing rec center, amazing public safety, so, you know, and it's really good for all ages. So, it's an attractive community for a diverse group of people. So, I would say, you know, the quality of life is the number-one thing that I love that Monona offers.
Jennifer?
Well, I chose to move my family here in 2014 particularly because of the school district. We were in Milwaukee for 15 years and my oldest was school age and we needed to get her in a better situation. And so, the schools are really what drew me here. But now that we've been here, I would say the people are the most special about Monona. I was really heartened when I volunteered at the Loud and the Library event earlier this year. How many people come out to get involved in their community? You know, they, everyone's really involved, which is what makes Monona so special. There's a sense of ownership in Monona. It's our Monona and we want to protect what's here. And I feel strongly about that now that it's my home as well. You know, we've got our beautiful parks, our access to the lake, you know, our wonderful community center, the Dream Park, where I spend a lot of time with my daughter. And so, I think there's a lot of special things about Monona, but really it's the people that make it special.
And Brian?
Sure. So, similar, the neighborhood feel and community aspect is probably one of the strongest things that's a driver for Monona and what makes Monona special for the majority of people that I run into and talk. Schools, of course, draw a lot of our families in and retain a lot of our families and we have amazing support for our school district here. And the quality of services that Andrew talked about, that, you know, we're Madison or we're Monona, we're close to Madison, we can access Madison and all that Dane County has to offer, but we are Monona and we really take pride in the services that we're able to provide our residents. So, the access of the parks and other aspects, we take a great amount of pride in. It was once said that we're the best kept secret in Dane County, which some of us from the 75th still have one of those T-shirts laying around and it tends to be true. We have a lot of people that will step up, get involved, and take care of each other.
All right. The next question, you touched on this in your opening statement, but why are you running for council and what makes you the best candidate? And just to mix things up a little bit, let's start with Andrew for this one.
So, I think, you know, I wouldn't term it as the best candidate, but I think growing up and moving away for a while and then coming back to live in Monona and choosing to live in Monona gives an interesting perspective, an outside perspective of, you know, the different communities that are out there and what really makes Monona special. So, I mean, again, you know, I initially ran because I, as cheesy as it sounds, I wanted to give back to a community that gave me so much as I grew up here. And I'm running again because I believe, you know, I can do more and really working on redevelopment of Broadway and Monona Drive, thinking about ways that Monona could, as I said in my opening statement, lead by example, whether that's through sustainability initiatives or, you know, currently the council is going to be reviewing city employee benefits so providing paid family leave and paid family care. And I really believe, you know, with that theme, that Monona is unique and is specially situated where we can, you know, test those boundaries, try different things, and see where we can go as a city and be an example. So, I mean, I think I'm a great candidate because I'm active, I'm involved in the community, I'm trying to get to a number of events. I believe I have some good ideas of what we can do as far as a city and I, you know, I'm a hard worker and I'm passionate about Monona.
Jennifer?
I think that I bring a fresh perspective as well to the council, being newer to Monona. I have a young family and so when I'm thinking about Monona, I'm thinking about what Monona could be for my children. We intend to stay here for a long time and I hope that they stay in Monona as well. And so, I view my perspective as a young parent on the council as a valuable voice. I am a full-time working mother and balancing that priority is a challenge, but I feel strongly about service and I want to model service for my children. And so, getting involved on the council was one way to do that. Being new to the community, I wanted to meet my neighbors. I've been fortunate enough to be able to get out and meet a lot of you, which has been fantastic, to learn about the history of Monona, learn about why we do things the way we do, and to kind of look at where Monona could go with the input of my community. So, that's kind of why I wanted to stay involved and get involved with my community.
Brian?
Sure. I don't think you could go wrong with any of the candidates. I think all four of the candidates that you have to choose from will take this job seriously and actually do a wonderful job at it. I enjoy the problem solving. I enjoy using the process despite how long and I see someone that showed up today that I'm excited that's here in the sense of there have been discussions about certain topics that take a long time for the process to be able to harvest enough information for us to be able to make good decisions moving forward. So, I enjoy doing the process work, which is very difficult. It's time-consuming, but I think it's important work. All of the other candidates that I've been able to meet and work with on different committees, they equally take this serious and do a good job.
And Molly?
So, I think the biggest inspiration for me as far as running for office is just the need for representation. I would really like to see more younger people getting involved in local leadership, more women at the table, and really I feel like Monona is in a state of great transition right now. We have a very substantial senior population and we also have a lot of younger families and individuals moving into town. To be able to bridge that gap and really speak on behalf of everybody through my different connections with the senior center and senior population, but also as a younger, newer resident of Monona, to bring that sort of next-generation perspective to the table. I also feel very excited that this is the first contested election we've had in a number of years for city council. To me, choice during an election season is essential and so just to be offering residents, you know, I agree that everyone who is participating today has a lot of strengths that they're bringing to the table and all are very interested in that leadership at the local level. But I think it's also important that people are taking the time to really research, you know, who the candidates are and make an informed decision about candidates who are, you know, meaningful and reliable to them. So, I think that's a very exciting part of this election. I think what makes me stand out as a candidate is just the variety of personal and professional experiences that I've been able to accrue as a special educator. I'm very accustomed to and comfortable, you know, working on behalf of and advocating on behalf of a variety of different stakeholders. I think accessibility and accommodating a variety of different members of our community would be a priority of mine, continuing on and making our city dementia-friendly, making sure that everyone feels as though they're being reached out to and communicated clearly to by the council. And I really feel like I can fulfill that role if I'm elected.
Thank you. Now, let's start with Jennifer. How will you best represent the residents of Monona?
I think one of the important initiatives that I've been working on with the council is we've implemented a community actions needs assessment this year. It was part of our 2018 budget. We feel that, or a few of us on the council feel that we need to look at how we're communicating to our residents and how our residents are being able to communicate back to us. And so, we're looking at kind of our internal policies as well as best practices for other municipalities as to how we communicate. Are we utilizing social media well enough? Are we reaching out to all of our residents across the board scale? And how are we soliciting that feedback from our residents? I think Monona's going to have some interesting challenges moving forward. We have aging facilities. We've got needs for development and to be able to hear from our residents, hear what they want. For example, with the community center, you know, we're going to need to address that space in the next five to 10 years. We'd like to be able to hear from our residents as to what they would like to see in that space and if we can't communicate well with our residents, then how are we going to get that done? So, I'm really looking forward to taking that on and really making changes and improving the way we communicate with our residents.
Brian?
Yeah. So, a lot of this actually comes through the support through our committees and commissions. So, many of our residents have been able to make that a very transparent process. So, we've spent a lot of time more recently making sure that that's well spelled out. Previous to that, there was somewhat of a mystery of how is it that certain people are selected and not selected? And the city council more recently put together, and the mayor put together, a nice procedure on how is it that we get more and more residents to be able to participate? And it's not all of us throwing up to the same thing over and over again, that we're reaching out, we're having new people join these groups to help make some decisions. Key is around transparency. We don't want things to be a mystery, which is part of the communication topic that Jennifer talked about, so I'll leave it at that.
Molly?
Can I have you just repeat the question? I just want to make sure I'm answering it.
How will you best represent the residents of Monona?
Great. So, I think, given my status as a younger resident, having moved in in the past five years, as well as my connections to the senior population, I think what I'm really interested in is making sure that everybody feels they have a voice and I have a background in communication and community organizing that I think will really lend itself to that. I'm excited to represent younger people of Monona, but I also know that a lot of the older residents, you know, don't always get reached through our, you know, we keep talking about communication as needing to be a priority and I really feel that, you know, more town hall events, events at the senior center, really reaching out to senior residents in their places of residence, making sure that that is as streamlined and as transparent as possible so that everyone feels that they're engaged. I feel that I could very capably make that sort of communication line open and happen if I were to be elected. I think also, you know, a lot of the, I think there's a lot of interest and discussion happening right now about potential, you know, growth in the school district. And while the city council does not always have, you know, a direct voice on things like school building referendum, for example, I do feel that having a background as an educator will lend itself well to being able to advocate on behalf of educators and families who have concerns about that as we move forward and as our community continues to grow.
Andrew?
Yeah, I think everyone touched on this in one way or another, but really communication. So, I've tried to, in my first time, really be accessible, whether it's talking to residents as they reach out or volunteering at different events and really being visible and trying to actually volunteer in a variety of areas, whether it's in the Monona Community Festival or, you know, city committees or on the Monona Grove Education Foundation. But I really take a lot of pride in my ability to hear all sides and do my homework and make a decision that I think is best for Monona. And I think overall, being open-minded is the most important part about representing Monona and representing it the best. It's not just, you know, I may have ideas, but they don't necessarily, maybe not the best things for Monona or, you know, you have to be able to switch your kind of vision and your thoughts every once in a while and I think being open-minded is one of my skills that I have.
All right. Our next question. What would be your top two goals over the next two years as a council member? Your top two goals, starting with Brian?
So, the first one would be implementing or at least our next phase of discussion around our facilities, our aging facilities. I'm sure everybody will bring this piece up of, we had a BRAZE study done a few years back which assessed all of our city facilities and where they were at and what direction to move. And that study did not reach the implementation stage. More recently, it's been put on the city council to kind of revive that plan or that assessment and look to see how is it that we're going to implement some of these strategies. The mayor recently put together a long-range facility committee to do some of that work, go back, re-update that plan, and then figure out what it is that we're going to do. That's the key item. The other, if people have been paying attention, is the issue around taxes and how we have a particular big-box store that is challenging their tax assessment and what would be the result of that. And so, the result that I think we will have at a city level is we're going to have a shifting tax burden onto the residents. And what that will likely mean is the council will have to make some very difficult decisions on how is it that we maintain core services and at the same time, don't shift this burden of tax onto all of our residents. So, those are the two key items over the next two years at least.
Molly, what would be your two top goals over the next two years as a council member?
Well, I think the concept of development is very tricky and I think one thing that we'll need to be cognizant of and one thing that I'm very excited about is just improving the quality of our roads and our bike paths and really make sure that we prioritize bike and pedestrian traffic and accessibility to the city, particularly as the Yahara River Front continues to be evolving and developed in that three-phase project. You know, I think we've just recently formed the Ad Hoc Bike and Pedestrian Safety Committee. I think that that will really, you know, bring to the table a lot of issues that sort of, you know, why aren't we getting the same bike traffic and pedestrian traffic that we could be, given the, you know, the development that we're doing right now and making sure that we have bike racks at more businesses, making sure that we have bike maintenance facilities, making sure that our bike lanes are safe and that our roads and our bike paths are, you know, sustainably, you know, made to be in good shape for the long haul so that we can continue to bring in this traffic, particularly given, you know, the potential outcome of the dark store legislation and needing to make sure that we're not placing any sort of disproportionate burden on taxpayers, really amplifying the tourism aspect and getting more people into town. I also think just generally the accessibility piece to our community. I've been really excited about different steps that we're taking with developing our parks a little bit more, making sure that there are sidewalks, ramps, really emphasizing accessibility to people of all abilities in that way. And just ensuring that as we continue, you know, Jennifer mentioned that we are working on, or we will need to work on making the community center, the senior center, different, bigger, providing more space to more people and really being conscientious of the accessibility piece when we take a look at those facilities down the road.
Andrew?
Yeah. Borderline, just repeating what people said, but, so, I mean, the top, one of my top priorities for the next two years is really looking at city facilities. I think, you know, we did the city a disservice back in 2011 when the study was done and then shelving it for a number of years. The costs have continued to go up. Our facilities continue to deteriorate and then the needs have also changed. So, I think that is definitely something in the next two years that we're going to have a plan because it's not going to be done within the next year or two. It's going to be a five, 10, 20-year plan that we're going to need to implement. So, number one is looking at our city facilities. And then, number two is really redevelopment. So, I've been on the Community Development Authority for about a year and one of the more eye-opening concepts was, you know, redevelopers often come and look at different properties on Monona Drive and, you know, a lot of the times, Monona's had to jump at allowing that to happen, but we don't necessarily have a plan of what we want that to look like, what we want, what businesses we need to attract so that we have a comprehensive, you know, look for our residents for, you know, do we need more restaurants or grocery stores next to apartment buildings? So, anyways, long story is, you know, in some ways, I think we've haphazardly just done redevelopment as we've been able to because we get really excited. And I think in the next two years, we really have to work with city committees and the necessary personnel to look at a comprehensive plan for Broadway and Monona Drive and really provide a vision of what we want that corridor to look like for our residents and for the city of Monona.
And Jennifer?
It's always difficult to go last on this question because you end up repeating everyone. And so, I guess I would echo what everyone else has said about the dark store issue, having to make some difficult financial decisions in the coming years if we end up losing that case. Unfortunately, the legislature wasn't able to pass legislation in terms of the dark store issue to kind of close that loophole for us, to protect municipalities. One way that I'm fighting for Monona is I was able to testify on behalf of Monona at the Senate Committee hearing on the dark store issue, representing, you know, the council and the citizens in hopes that the legislature would be able to close that loophole and they didn't. Another way that I think that, or another priority that Monona will have in the coming years is its public safety needs. We've had some trouble in our fire department staffing, making sure that we've got enough staff. Thankfully, this year, we were able to add a firefighter to the budget, but our volunteer firefighter base is changing and so we need to look creatively at how we're addressing the needs of our fire departments and making sure that we have the coverage we need, you know. fire departments, and making sure that we have the coverage we need, you know. Keeping those services within Manona is important to, I think, many residents. We don't want to have to go to Madison and kind of lose those facilities for our residents, so I think it'll be a need in the next several years to really look at how we're, how we're staffing, how we're structuring those public safety.
This might be a, a good time for a quick recap, since we had a number of audience members come in after we started. This is a candidate forum for the Manona City Council race. Voters are going to choose three candidates for Manona City Council on April 3. The candidates joining us today are Brian Holmquist, Jennifer Coore, Andrew Kitzler, and Molly Groupi is joining us by telephone. We have about an hour's worth of questions that were prepared by Manona Community Media for me, and then we were hoping to have another hour of audience questions at the conclusion of, of the prepared questions. If you have a question in the audience, there are note cards or pieces of paper on the table as you walked in. You can write your question and pass them down the aisle, and Will Nimmo, our timekeeper, will, will go through them and give them to me when it's time to present audience questions. The next question, and we will start with Molly with this question. In terms of economic development, what are the greatest opportunities and challenges over the next two years? So the greatest opportunities and challenges in terms of economic development over the next two years, Molly?
Well, I think, you know, we've touched upon economic development in a variety of ways already. Again, looking at this dark store legislation, how that may impact, you know, that, you know, there are no quick and easy fixes, but how we'll really need to make sure that we are being thoughtful about how we try to responsibly develop the city, and making sure that we're growing our tax base, and increasing tourism, and making sure that, again, that with some of that visitor traffic, we're kind of making some opportunities for that economic development, as well as sort of the structural development as well. I think the challenges are, again, the accessibility piece. I think, you know, a couple of years ago, we had some different bike lanes put in on Winnicott Road, for example, that are not very easily interpreted by a lot of people. And so just to be thoughtful in how we look ahead at bringing more visitor traffic to the community. How can we be thoughtful in planning our bike lanes, and maintaining our bike paths, and as I said before, you know, making sure that we have those bike maintenance stations and bike racks, really opportunities for, you know, public access to places that maybe they otherwise would not previously have had access to, and just ensuring that we're really focusing on that piece of development as we face some of these challenges with taxation and the dark store loophole.
Andrew?
Yeah, so I've mentioned it before, but Manona's an attractive place to be for businesses, and I think, you know, having a comprehensive plan, looking again at Broadway and Manona Drive in particular, and for the city to have an idea of who we want to attract, where we want to attract those, is, you know, a great opportunity that we have, because again, Manona's very attractive to developers coming in. The other one is the Manona Golf Course, so it's something that has been out there in the news, that they might be selling the Manona Golf Course. I think that's an opportunity and a challenge. Certainly, we will voice, I will voice my opinion on that piece, but it's really something that we're going to have to work together if they do move forward with that, with the city of Madison. And I think, you know, it's a challenge in the fact that I would hate to see the golf course leave. It's an opportunity in the fact that, you know, if they make their decision, opposing what I would think, you know, again, what are the businesses, what does that corridor, what does that redevelopment look like? So I think, you know, those are two opportunities and challenges that Manona faces in the next two years.
Jennifer?
So with the riverfront development, we are adding a hotel, which is going to be a boom for us, and will allow us to hopefully become more of a destination, with tourism being a priority. My hope is that we can translate some of those tourism dollars into different ways to recruit businesses along the Manona Drive and Broadway corridor. When we see that redevelopment in the riverfront, I think that's just going to kind of mushroom into new development as we go further west on Broadway, and hopefully maybe even further east on Broadway. And I'd like to see, as Andrew pointed out, kind of a comprehensive plan for what we'd like to see. And again, that's engaging residents, finding out what you'd like. Is it that you really want a place to go grab a burger after work? Is it that you're looking for some unique retail along Manona Drive? We've got a couple of things already that are happening on Manona Drive, the Cozy Home moved to Manona Drive, and, you know, are we going to look for more unique retail space along that corridor? And then would that become a more walkable area for shopping? You know, if we had added a restaurant, would that become a new area? So I think that's what we need to think about moving forward, but it'll be a challenge.
And Brian?
Sure. Redevelopment is hard. It's probably one of the hardest things that we have to do as a city, although there might be lots of developers that knock on our door. Almost every developer that knocks on our door has a handout looking for TIF. And so we have some really difficult parcels that we need to develop and redevelop, and it doesn't come easy. The amount of density that developers are expecting to get out of some of these sites, really push these sites, that it becomes a big challenge around some of the variables that, that you need to look at. People talked about the Broadway Corridor Plan. That plan's 20-plus years old right now. We need to relook at that plan, update it. So if we look at some of the development that's taking place on Broadway, the guidelines and requirements that exist for buildings may not fit with what it is that our current city wants to see being built. And our Manona Drive, we actually have guidelines, and we don't have a plan in existence, right, in existence right now. So there's lots of guidelines on what it is that we would like to see, but not necessarily specifying within our zoning structure or our comprehensive plan on what is it that we want and where, and what are the parameters surrounding that, so.
Good. Time for the next question. We'll start with Andrew. Excluding economic development, what are the most important challenges facing Manona, and how do you propose to address them?
So, this might parlay a little bit, but I think the dark store loophole is a, a large piece that we need to address and need to be vocal on. So that aside, pedestrian, bikability and walkability, I think, are the utmost importance for Manona. One, we are on, around the lake loop, so there's a number of residents and non-residents coming through Manona. I think there could be certainly safer pathways, there could be more sidewalks, there could be safe pedestrian routes to schools. And certainly, so, how I propose to address those, walkability and bikability is starting in the committee level. We have an idea for the McKenna Road to get to Winnicott. I certainly believe that we should move that forward with the sidewalk, as far as walking to Winnicott. And I'll be a vocal proponent for that. I mean, I walk my dog, and it's very unsafe, a lot of the times, to walk on the streets and almost get hit by cars. And, you know, I'll keep pushing that forward. So I'll be a vocal proponent for walkability and bikability.
Jennifer?
I think Manona's in a particularly interesting position right now. We have a very, we have an aging population. Average age in Manona is 49 and a half, compared with Madison, which is about 34, I believe. So we've got a, a different population. And that aging population is something we need to keep in mind in terms of our tax structure. If we do end up problems, and do end up being hit with this dark store issue, if the Manona lawsuit is lost, that's going to disproportionately probably impact our aging population. We want to think of ways to keep them in their homes, and I think there's ways for us to look at partnering with the county, and in those conversations on how to protect our aging population. There are things that we can do at the community center level, and the senior center level, keeping them engaged, along with the fact that we've got new families moving in. I think it's important for us to think about creative partnerships between our aging population and our young families. I'd like to see us explore utilizing the senior center, along with our after-school program, to make connections in our community there. I think that's a, an interesting way to build community. And so my hope is that we think creatively about how to address our aging population.
Brian?
Sure. When I reread this question, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that I'm covering and answering what it is that people are hoping to hear, and not repeating our, our same information, because I, I see it as really, again, our, our key item on the table here is our city, city infrastructure. And we've already gone down that path, so I'll kind of set that aside and kind of pick a different path, similar to where it's gone around city services. So we have a lot of services that we offer here. We have a wonderful city staff that deliver these services. We have, our departments, department heads and the staff that work within our departments have shown a level of professionalism that is amazing, and have been very responsive to the citizens. And I, I applaud what it is that we've been able to accomplish thus far, and how is it that we continue to look at efficiencies? How is it that we continue to look at effectiveness? So if we do have ongoing, challenging budgets, so we don't get to just have an open checkbook that is bottomless, we have limits on how it is that we have money available for us, and how we utilize that. So when we have good staff, how is it that we compensate our staff in a way that is respectful and, and wants to retain our, our employees, while at the same time recognizing that our operating budget is a fixed, has some fixed parameters to it. The costs of things continue to rise, but the amount that we're able to take back in shrinks. So at some point, we, we end up in a very difficult position around, how do we, how do we maintain the best employees that we have? How is it that we maintain the services or increase services for what all of us demand, in a way that balances out? So it's, it's a good struggle to have, but I see us continually having to look at what is it that we offer for core services? How do we get more efficiencies? How do we become more effective with it?
And Molly?
Well, I think, you know, I think really continued engagement of all residents of the city will continue to need to be a priority and a challenge beyond sort of the economic development piece. As Jen mentioned, with our significant senior population, you know, Manona does really well in leveraging technology through the radio station, and its civic listservs, and reaching most residents who are tech savvy, but, you know, really making time to create partnerships with our, you know, older population, and making sure that they feel that they're civically engaged, socially engaged, finding a way to really make the community accessible to all people, not just in sort of the physical sense, but what are we offering to connect people to each other? I think one thing that I really would like to see is more community volunteer and partnerships between new, younger residents moving in and the older population. I think, you know, I've had conversations with different people in the community about how we could, you know, have a welcome wagon, make sure that when new residents are moving in, maybe we pair them with, you know, a longtime resident of the city, and getting them registered to vote, getting their library card, showing them around the town, or providing maps, or, you know, other information about where in the city certain things are that they might need to access. And so I think you just, you know, the challenge of balancing the incoming younger population, as well as the, you know, the existing senior population, making sure that we're connecting with each other, I think would be a big priority and a challenge in many ways as we look ahead.
All right, the next question, Jennifer will start. How do you view the sustainability efforts of the city? Is there anything you would do differently or additionally? How do you view the sustainability efforts of the city, and is there anything you would do differently or additionally?
I think Manona has really leaned in to sustainability. We have a standing sustainability committee. We do utilize solar within our community. If you're walking into the library, there is a tick, or a counter on the wall in the library that shows what the level of savings we are generating by utilizing solar. I'd really like to see us explore other opportunities with sustainability. I've been talking to some of the community members of the Sustainability Committee, and they're hoping to increase the amount of solar within Manona. I think that would be a fantastic move for us. We're doing a lot of development, you know, with the riverfront development. I'd really like to see us push more green development within Manona. Do we have green roofs? Do we look at permeable pavement abilities on our parks, our parking lots in our parks? You know, there's a lot of things where we could be, become a leader within Dane County on sustainability. So my hope is that with partnership with the committee within Manona, we look at ways where we can really push the envelope on sustainability. My hope is that we could look at kind of what other communities are doing around sustainability, and look for ways to partnership with other communities. I think there is a benefit in numbers, you know, for negotiating contracts for solar, for looking at clean water issues. I think partnering with other communities is a, a key point.
All right, Brian?
So, we, as a city, put together our sustainability plan just a while back, and we're in the infancy stage of implementation. We need to, we need to keep with the plan. We have a plan that's well spelled out. It identifies multiple goal areas and metrics within each of these goal areas. It helps separate out what is it we as a city can be doing, and how is it that we develop strategies as a city? So is it around purchasing? Is it around other infrastructure? And then there's a component around residents, and how is it that we engage residents and help them have the knowledge and understanding about ways that they can implement strategies as well to achieve these goals. So, we have, we have a well-crafted plan. I was on that group when we put together that plan. It's a very thick original document, and there was a lot of encouragement put into, how is it that on a yearly cycle that we're coming back to that plan? We're delivering a report about how, how are we making movement as a city? How is it that we're making movement as, as residents within the city? So I continue with the plan and use that as the mechanism to increase our sustainability practices, to make them routine as the city makes decisions.
And Molly?
I think what's exciting about living in Manona is the number of residents who are really committed to sustainability efforts. I like that we've been exploring options like the Terror Cycle Program, and, you know, there's been a conversation about the city swim meet this summer, and making it a zero-waste event. And I think a lot of that just comes from community ideas, and, and really putting our heads together to provide that input and, and give it to the, the council. So I think, you know, I like that we're already on this path of exploring a lot of new technologies and methods to try to make Manona a more sustainable community. I like that we listen to and solicit input from the community about these things. But I really, you know, we've talked about it sort of at length, but I think, you know, just reducing emissions through things like enhancing the bike and pedestrian traffic, and really following up on more of those efforts. You know, can we make more city events zero-waste or close to zero-waste? You know, can we explore more recycling and composting programs that would sort of make an impact environmentally? I do think the option of exploring solar is kind of exciting, so it's, it's fun to hear Jennifer talk about that option, and just, you know, know that it potentially could be in the works, and really looking for more of those opportunities as we move forward.
And Andrew?
Yeah, so, I mean, I applaud all the sustainability efforts that the city has done. I mean, we have a dedicated staff person. Now it's only 15%, so we could probably do more. And then, as Brian said, we do have a sustainability plan. But I do think, you know, one of the things I would change, excuse me, is sometimes there's a paralysis by analysis, and I think there's a number of items that the plan or otherwise, that the city could check off and start doing, whether it is immediately, that is little to no cost at all. One great example is the leaf management plan that the Sustainability Committee implemented. You probably saw some signs around the city, but really trying to educate the residents to not rake their leaves into the gutters, because then it goes into the lakes, and then there's phosphorus, et cetera, et cetera. But I think in that way, there's a number of items, and I think, you know, we could push a little bit- push a little bit harder with staff to do purchasing, looking at vehicles in particular. I know there's, you know, we purchase a lot, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but we purchase a number of vehicles regularly, and having alternative energy vehicles, I think, would be important. So anyways, there is a number of things that I think we could do pretty quickly. And then, you know, a nice idea, and I think, you know, the solar kind of hits it on the nose, is, you know, there's a number of cities that are 100% renewable energy, and I think that's one way Manona could explore and lead by example is, you know, what are the ways that, at least at a starting point, look at the city's operations and being renewable and not taking as big of a carbon footprint? And if we can do that as a city, I think it's a great example to other cities and other residents.
The next question. What is one part of Manona City Services that needs the most attention right now? What is the one part of Manona City Services that needs the most attention right now? And it's Brian's turn to start.
So one that comes to mind is actually public safety. So police, fire, EMS, or paramedic services, and dispatch. I know I just named four departments, but I'll lump it as one grouping because there is this idea of you touch one, you end up touching them all in some respects. Although we are a landlocked community and we're a community that's likely not going to grow in numbers much beyond that 8,000 mark anytime soon, people will often say, well, wait a minute, why is it that we have so many officers per Kappa? And it really has to do with, we have a belt line that has how many cars going by it every day. And so when we look at our, our public safety as a bigger department, it's a very taxing job for our public safety to service not only the residents and businesses within Manona, but everything that comes by Manona. So all of Manona Drive, the Broadway corridor, the Belt Line, and all of the services that take place across the Belt Line when you add in Superstore and other services on that end. So when we look at our, our services around police and fire and paramedics, we have a very high-level demand, and it is difficult to match that with the ongoing staffing levels that we need and the ongoing capital improvements. Earlier Jennifer was talking about staffing at the firefighter, paramedic aspect. It used to be a much more heavily volunteer-driven service. It is a professional service now. We moved up to a paramedic level. We fought for that level to happen because we knew our residents would need that and demand that. It allows us to be able to respond to our resident base much quicker. When you call 911 here, you're going to get response at your house much quicker than you will if you live across the street in Madison. We take great pride in that, but it comes with, oh, time is almost up. It comes with a great cost, so I'll leave that at that.
Molly, what is the one part of Manona City Services that needs the most attention right now?
Well, I've had several conversations with both, you know, volunteers in the department, the fire department, members of the local 311, some of the staff. And to me, it seems like there are a lot of challenges facing the fire department in particular. I know that the facilities are, you know, not really well-equipped to handle, you know, the level of action and traffic that we have going in and out and making sure that volunteers and staff firefighters are comfortable in those accommodations. So I think, you know, I've had conversations about what the future of that department will look like. I think it's difficult to be recruiting younger volunteers, and I think that, you know, we've talked about the possibility of building a new fire station and what that would cost the city, or the idea of collaborating with Madison Fire Department. And I think there are a lot of mixed opinions. I think it's a very complicated, complex situation. But certainly, I think in the coming years, as, you know, we see the staffers in our department, our fire department, continue to age, difficulty recruiting younger staff to, you know, stay on staff and be attracted to that type of position. So I think that conversation is going to be very difficult, and I, you know, I don't think there's an easy way, but I definitely think that the fire department in particular is one that I've had many conversations with residents with that will need attention in the coming years and I think poses kind of a very complex challenge for the city.
Andrew?
Well, so I agree. Public safety, fire department is the number one, not to rehash a lot of the other comments, but, I mean, it's really the first domino that needs to fall in order for us to really look at the rest of the city facilities or city services. You know, as Molly mentioned, is it's, it's a conversation that needs to happen. What are residents' perspectives? You know, do we need to, you know, continue having a volunteer full-time? What do we need to do to work with the full-time, or the fire department to get more volunteers? I mean, I think this is an issue and a, an issue that's going to just continue to rise and continue to build. And so, you know, I would say, you know, public safety and the fire department in particular is the first domino that needs to fall and needs our attention.
Jennifer?
Well, everyone else has discussed public safety, and so I would certainly agree with that. I think one of the ways to address that issue is in communications. We need to talk to our residents and find out what they want, what they expect about public service, public safety services. Are they wanting us to explore partnering with Madison? I know that's something that we've kind of shied away from, but if that's something that the community really wants, then we should be having listening sessions to hear from our community to find out what they expect. Do they expect us to have full-time, on-staff paramedics? Or is that something that we don't need to have? So communications, engaging our residents, I think will be one way that we can move forward and take deliberate steps to address these issues.
All right. Now it's time for the hard questions from the audience. So I'm going to take this one first since it's very related to what everyone was just talking about. Question from the audience. Where should a new fire department be located? Molly?
So interestingly enough, you know, I've spoken with members of the Manona Fire Department, and it seems like a likely place that we would potentially build is closer to McFarland, but I believe that they are also, or Madison is building, a new fire department in that location, which sort of, you know, limits our options by default. I've also heard from volunteers in the department that they would like to see something on Manona Drive just for accessibility purposes. But again, you know, that would be a conversation and something that we'd really need to look at as far as space and making sure that it would make sense cost-wise and location-wise to try to put a facility there. To me, it seems like, given, you know, what I know and I'm continuing to learn about the existing facility, improvements to that facility would be most likely less cost-effective than building a new facility. Obviously, this is something that would require a great deal of research and a community conversation about. But I think that, to me, it seems like they might like something on Manona Drive, but that our options are limited given this, you know, potential construction of one of Madison's new fire departments and fire stations.
Andrew, where are you going to build the new fire department?
Magic wand. I mean, so realistically, realistically, when you look at the calls, a large percentage are on the Belt Line, Walmart, and Heritage. So naturally, you kind of gravitate towards those areas, whether that's on Manona Drive, a little bit off of Manona Drive. You know, I've had the same conversations that Molly's had, you know. I think the fire department generally would prefer to be on Manona Drive for ease of access and not being, driving through residents' neighborhoods and different things like that. You know, I think another area to include in the conversation is Broadway. I know it's a little bit maybe further away from Heritage, but it's closer to the Belt Line. But it's a, as, you know, as I think everyone will probably say, it's a conversation that we're going to have to have sooner rather than later. It's, it will be a direct impact on our tax base because if we do build it on Manona Drive, that's going to potentially take away businesses that could have been there. But, you know, I guess the simple way to answer it is, you know, I would look at Manona Drive and Broadway and kind of start there and see where we go.
Jennifer?
So I would echo what everyone else has said about looking at Manona Drive and Broadway. I sit on the public safety committee. We've had those conversations. I know that that's what the fire department would prefer. And then there's the issue of the price tag. I mean, that is prime real estate, and, you know, we don't own property right there right now, so we would be in the market for purchasing property. I did go to a conference for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities this fall, and we sat in a session where they discussed partnering with private, private entities to develop buildings. And one of the options they gave was building a fire department that had private residential space. I mean, it sounds kind of ridiculous, but there's, there's ways we could address or think creatively about what this new fire department would look like. That may not be as significant of an impact on our, on our financial bottom line. So I think we've got to look and think creatively because this is going to be a significant purchase for the city and maybe thinking outside of the box and looking at ways we can partner with private industry or private developers to look at, you know, creative ways to, to solve those problems.
Brian?
So, yep, everybody's identified the biggest hurdle, which is where do you put it? And the balance of if you take something off the tax rolls, it's going to go somewhere. So there's that, the immense negative aspect of that. The BRI study did identify some sites. Those sites no longer are available. So that's some of the difficulty of when you do a study, put together a plan, and you don't act, you end up in the dilemma that we're in. So you kind of laid our cards out on the table for everybody saying we need to do these things. When we don't carry it out, we're kind of stuck because now we've got to go back. People now know what we're looking for. Slight angle is the idea of, I think we actually need a public safety building, not a fire department. What that means is our police, fire, EMS, and dispatch work seamlessly together, and you can't have these departments in different buildings. I'm not suggesting that anybody has said that they just use fire as the example. But police, fire, paramedics, and dispatch, they are often called out together and paged together to services, so.
Andrew, starting with you. The next audience question. Do you truly believe it's a wise use of taxpayer dollars at this time to conduct a community needs assessment? I've worked with multiple municipalities on these types of endeavors, and they cost anywhere from $50,000 to $200,000. Couldn't surveys provide you with info on how to best communicate with residents?
Yeah, I mean, so going backwards, surveys certainly could. I think a community needs assessment would likely include a professional individual that guides the conversation and makes sure that we're looking at all angles. You know, we have city staff that are excellent, but they're lean, and they don't have a great deal of extra bandwidth to potentially add it. So a community needs assessment, you know, is, is great in the aspect of gaining feedback, seeing what thoughts are, and seeing the direction of the city. So, you know, is it a wise use? I certainly think, you know, there's a time and a place for it, but we'll see where that goes, so, thanks.
Jennifer?
Well, I, I think strongly about that we do need a communications needs assessment at this point. We've seen our city staff being asked to do things that are outside of their areas of expertise in terms of communications, and I think we need to look in-house and how we are utilizing staff time to make sure that we're utilizing them the way that, you know, makes most financial sense. Should we, you know, hire someone within-house or shift duties within-house to make sure that we are reaching out to our residents in an appropriate way while, you know, not asking staff who don't have the time or the expertise to do that communications? I would say that all of the other items that we've discussed today had pieces involved in communications, selling our new public safety building, selling, you know, our development plan. And so I think finding out from an outside individual what best practices are will help us better plan for future communication to be able to then move forward with a lot of these other issues that we're developing.
Brian?
I see it as our, one way to look at efficiencies and effectiveness. So it's been mentioned that we have staff in many departments that are doing many different things, wearing lots of different hats. Asking them also to take on items that they may not be highly skilled in is a challenge. Earlier on, a few years ago, almost every department had their own website that was homebrewed on their own. It took us a while to kind of herd everybody together to say, no, like, you go to our main landing page, and that's how you access all of our departments. And being able to bring things in a way that created some uniformity, some expectations that when you're going to a certain department, you're going to get certain expectations from each of, each of our city departments. I think we need to continue on that path, but at the same time, as soon as you build it once, how is it that you keep updating the content? How is it organized? How is it messaged? The ability to take our lean numbers of staff and be able to bring them all up to the same level of skill level, I think is just not the most efficient and effective way to do that. This study will help us detail out and align where does that work live? And how is it that people in the different departments can get the information to the right people to be able to communicate it as effectively as possible?
Molly?
From my perspective, I would say, you know, three, three threads have come out from a lot of our conversations thus far in the, in the forum about communication. And, you know, it's clear that we need to be more transparent and streamlined and sort of organized in the way that we are communicating with our residents. But we also need to be looking at prompt and appropriate use of information that we accrue from these assessments as well as, you know, long-term studies. And we also need to make sure that then we are using this information for more of a long-term planning, long-term planning purposes so that we don't find ourselves in the position again where we're needing to reevaluate this comprehensively for, you know, a large sum of money. So to me, I think, you know, obviously, these are some conversations that happened at the council level that I was not a part of. And so looking forward, I think it would just be my responsibility to ensure, you know, if I am elected to council, to make sure that, looking forward, that we're responsibly using the information that we accrue from the study for long-term planning purposes, that we are using, you know, the data promptly and appropriately to try to make sure that it will be a lasting impact on the community and improving community communication in a way that we're not sitting on something for a long time and sort of missing our opportunity to act on it. So I guess, you know, just looking forward, making sure that our communication and our processes are transparent and really, you know, pouncing on this information in a way that will be effective in the near future, but also for a long time.
All right. Starting with Jennifer, the next question from the audience. How can Manona take action to help the health of our lakes? Maybe I would say what can Manona do to improve the health of our lakes?
So phosphorus is a big polluter for our lakes, and one of the biggest gateways for phosphorus to get into our lakes is from decomposing leaves. Manona has beautiful aging trees. It's one of the things that makes Manona so wonderful. But we have residents that rake their leaves into the gutter, and so, you know, actively reaching out to residents to make sure that they are disposing of their leaves appropriately, maintaining our storm drains to make sure that they're not being covered with leaves. And then we have a fantastic public works department, and they are doing the best that they can to make sure that our streets are clean. We just bought a new street sweeper to kind of help with that, which is fantastic because I know that the more that you sweep your streets, the less phosphorus gets into our lakes. The county has some fantastic programs with regards to clean water. They've been sponsoring some research studies about point source phosphorus entry into our watershed. And so engaging with the county, making sure we know kind of what's available, what resources we can take advantage of. Are there grants available for us? Are there programs that we can implement within our city to educate residents and to be doing what we can in terms of our public works to prevent that runoff into the lake?
Brian?
So it's funny to think back, years ago, the, the goal was how do you get the water as quick as you can? you get the water as quick as you can from the streets to the lake? And then we learned, whoa, that's actually the worst thing to do. It should be like, how is it that you can slow it down and make it take the longest time to get to the lakes? Um, and so with that kind of segues into our infrastructure. And so, we've been lucky enough to be able to leverage lots of grant money, um, from the county. Given the number of outfalls out around Manona, um, we made the top ten, or I think we had eight of the top ten worst outfalls, um, in the last, uh, time they were assessing, um, outfalls on, on Lake Manona. So with that comes, when we're doing infrastructure projects, how is it that we're able to, um, one, leverage money to then be able to put in, uh, different types of strategies to be able to help slow, slow down that water? How is it that we're able to pull other items out of that water? So we have a variety of, um, different techniques and basins around the city. Um, everything from larger scale items to smaller scale items. So I think we can continue to, to make efforts with, um, stormwater that way, in addition to our leaf management plan that was in the, uh, sustainability plan to help residents side. I'll leave it at that.
Molly?
So I think, you know, we've talked a lot in our forum today about redevelopment. And I think just ensuring, you know, in large part, if our redevelopment projects, you know, as we're, you know, rehabilitating parks on the lakeshore or, um, different access points to the lake, that we're responsible in how we redevelop those spaces and maybe take the opportunity to see what sort of clean water, you know, actions we can take, um, to try to ensure that, you know, at the time that project is being completed, what steps can we also take to make sure that we're being responsible and maybe plan for the future in, in those preservation efforts? Um, I also think, you know, there are a number of members, uh, of the Manona community who are in the, you know, the Clean Lakes Alliance, the River Alliance, soliciting their information and feedback about some ideas that they have or, you know, would like to see implemented to ensure the health, um, and, you know, the, the flourishing of our, of our beautiful waterways. Um, I also think simple actions like, you know, I think for the most part, we use salt in our snow removal efforts around town, finding a way to use more sand, um, or having conversations about, you know, snow and ice removal that may have a negative impact on our rivers and lakes and, and our access points there, I think would be important conversations to have down the line.
Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with a number of things people already said. I think the city is doing a good job, uh, in some areas, especially with like catch basins. Uh, Molly, uh, kind of hit one nail on the head is, um, as we in parks, for example, the Wild Haven, we're redeveloping that, we are going to be rebuilding the shoreline to address, uh, erosion issues into the lake. Uh, we did similar aspects in, um, uh, Schluter Beach. Um, so I think the city can do, uh, do their work and I think we can do additional work. I think the salt, uh, I know we do use some sand and salt in certain areas, but I think we can address that as well. And I think overall, uh, communication to our residents, whether they live on the lake or live off the lake, especially with, you know, leaf management. I don't mean to beat that drum, but I think the number one, um, according to the Clear Lakes, uh, Alliance is the number one reason our phosphorus in Manona is so high is because of the leaves. Uh, people rake them into the, uh, gutters and then just let them go down the drain. Um, within, uh, I think it's, you know, a matter of, uh, a day, uh, if it's raining, all of the phosphorus is washed out of the leaves and it creates a tea that, uh, goes into our lake. So I think we have to do, um, you know, we, we are making initial steps, but I think we need to do, uh, a bigger effort to educate our, uh, population. Um, and in addition, you know, I, I think adding more street sweeping and cleaning out our catch basins and making sure that we, kind of make sure we do our house cleaning on our side, too.
All right. Uh, Brian, we'll start, uh, this round. The next question from the audience. How can Manona balance the need for redevelopment of Manona Drive while still maintaining an eclectic mix of businesses? Many small businesses cannot afford new construction lease rates, so oftentimes redevelopment brings more change, chains, diminishing the uniqueness of our retail community. So, um, how can you redevelop a Manona Drive while still maintaining an eclectic mix of businesses?
Yeah. Um, so Manona Drive is a very interesting kind of stretch. Um, the idea that we're going to have redevelopment from a business standpoint, from Manona Drive all the way up past the high school, I think is a, a dream that isn't going to come true. I think we need to really look at, um, sections of, of Manona Drive going up and have more clearly defined areas and what it is that we're hoping for in those areas. And then how we as a city set the, uh, set the parameters and set up the, um, the environment to allow those things to take place within those sections. We do have, uh, spotty, uh, different types of small businesses along that whole stretch. Uh, but being able to redevelop, um, does require enough of those collective properties together to be able to turn over. I think the, the balance part that's in that question of how do you do that in a way that a developer wants to come in and do that work? And then be able to turn around and have those spaces available for some of those smaller businesses is a, is a tricky piece. Um, many of the developments that, many of the developers that have come to us for different properties along the drive, that's been part of the conversation, that we're, um, struggling and how is it that we look at parking requirements? How is it that we look at the amount of properties that would need to be assembled together to make something actually take off? Um, without that, what you may have is the idea of one person buying one business and turning that business over with some lipstick and that's it. We have very undervalued properties all along Manona Drive. If you look at what these properties are assessed at right now, it's very undervalued. And the reason why is because it's old, old buildings that don't have much value at all. And we need to come up with a way to assemble them, to redevelop. And, um, I, I want our small businesses to be able to stay, um, and, and be part of that redevelopment, um, scheme. I saw my time's up, so.
Okay. Molly?
Sure. So, you know, I think Brian brings up a lot of good points. I think this is a complicated conversation. Um, what I think, uh, you know, would be really helpful in sort of envisioning the future of Manona Drive is collaboration with the Manona Eastside Business Alliance. Um, I've had some great discussions with Kristi Schilling, um, who, who's the director of the, of Mezba, and she just knows a lot of people and I think has some really good ideas in her conversations with residents and business owners about what the potential of that stretch, that strip of, of, uh, Manona Drive could be. Um, you know, I think casting a wider net for, you know, different and, and varied, uh, business owners would be a good step, you know, making sure that we're welcoming people from different parts of the community and, you know, the larger community to make sure that we're bringing in things that are still diverse and eclectic, but attractive to our demographic and the demographic that we may attract, um, in visitor traffic and tourism dollars. So, um, so I think just collaborating with people to have a, you know, a good, a good handle on what we have on Manona Drive now, what the possibilities are. Um, I think opening that, that those lines of conversation would be really important in determining where to go with this.
Andrew?
Yeah, I'd agree. I mean, the conversation has to, uh, a lot of the, uh, conversation has to start and include, uh, Mezba, um, see what the businesses' thoughts are, see, uh, what's going on. I want to step back and just say, too, the redevelopment of, uh, Manona Drive, although, you know, I'm pushing towards having a comprehensive plan, it's not going to happen within a year or two. And so there's, I, definitely going to be a shared, uh, business relationship, whether it's new development, redevelopment, or working with the older businesses there. So, when I do say having a comprehensive plan, it doesn't necessarily mean knocking a building down and building something, you know, nice and big, uh, in its place and knocking out the current businesses. But, you know, what are the businesses that make us attractive to residents? What are the businesses that make us attractive to businesses? Um, and what could we do along that corridor that makes sense? And I don't think it does make sense to knock everything down and, you know, kick all the current businesses out. But I do think it's a conversation, again, that has to be with, uh, Mezba. Is there something that the city could do? Is there something, uh, you know, as far as, uh, using our communications to attract new businesses? But, uh, having eclectic, uh, I think is kind of the strength of our community. I mean, we are an older community. Um, we have new businesses coming in and I think that's a part of what makes, uh, Manona unique. So I do, um, I don't want any inference that my focus on looking at the corridors to be really rebuilding and redeveloping everything, but it's really working on that shared kind of partnership of, you know, what do we see that vision of? And certainly includes, uh, working with current businesses and, uh, making sure that those are sustainable along Manona Drive, too.
We'll start with Molly for this next question. What are some ways Manona can attract?
Jennifer, it's still us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Um, I would say that, um, my vision for Manona Drive would be a much more organic, um, development in that my hope is that we look at the businesses that are there and, um, figure out ways we can match other businesses from the outside that would, um, complement what's already there. Um, you know, we've got some unique retail on the south end of, um, Manona Drive and other ways that we could attract other unique retail to that area, um, and make that, um, a much more deliberate plan for development. Again, utilizing our communications piece, um, and partnering with Mezba. Um, you know, Kristi's got a great handle on the local businesses. Um, she's built great relationships. Um, and I think that we can only, um, benefit from partnering with them and utilizing, you know, figuring out ways we can support what they're already doing.
I'm sorry for that. I was just, I know we have a lot of questions and I'm anxious to get as many as I can in before we run out of time. Molly, uh, what are some ways that Manona can attract young families to Manona?
Well, you know, I think we already are attracting a lot of younger families. Um, in particular, you know, families with children. I think the school district is a big draw. But I think a lot of the conversations we're having about bike and pedestrian accessibility and traffic, um, really enhancing our green spaces and, um, really, you know, devoting, you know, bedroom tax dollars from, from our hotels to tourism dollars that we can translate into projects and advertising that will really encourage younger people to understand that Manona can be a place for them. Um, you know, I think those are really good ways that we can use, um, you know, uh, the people that we already have here and some of our existing dollars to really project more to younger families who may be considering Manona about why it's the best place for them to be.
Andrew?
It's hard. I mean, so, uh, Manona is an expensive place to live. Uh, and, you know, I see this within my friends that want to move to Manona. They have to move to, you know, Far West Side or McFarland or, you know, different areas like that. And so it is something that is, you know, I'm keenly aware of and, um, frankly, I was lucky to buy my house at the time I did. Um, so Community Development Authority is actually looking at this. Uh, Manona currently has something called a Renew Manona, uh, program, which, uh, up until now has always, or has, uh, allowed residents to apply for a non-interest loan, um, to increase the value of their house. What that means is it could be for, um, a new bedroom, an additional garage, redoing their kitchen, different things like that to make it attractive to a larger buyer base. We're also looking at expanding that through additional funds that we'll be getting through the closing of a TIF, TIF district. Um, and we're looking at potentially providing, uh, help and funding for first-time homebuyers, uh, for families or for, uh, down payments of houses. So I think, you know, affordability in Manona is very much on my conscience and is on the, you know, on the agendas, I know, of CDA and I'm sure a number of other committees. Um, and as, you know, Molly said, bike and ped, uh, safety and walkability issues, I hear that consistently. I know there's, um, you know, people draw the line in the sand about sidewalks, but if, you know, I, frankly, I almost get hit by cars daily walking along, uh, Winnicott Road. And so it's just, you know, the safety and why would you want to bring your children in when you're about to get hit by a car? So that's something that I'm glad we're looking at. I think we can move a little bit faster. And then, of course, quality of services and quality of life. So, you know, our senior center, our Parks and Rec, I mean, we have amazing park facilities for Manona and I think, um, that is a huge strength. Redoing, uh, the Bridge Road Park, it is always busy now and it used to be a vacant lot essentially. And so it's just, uh, a great thing to see, so.
Jennifer?
Um, yeah, I think everybody's touched on a lot of the things that, um, we can do. Um, you know, I was drawn to Manona because of the schools. Um, council doesn't have a whole lot of, um, say in the schools, but, uh, we certainly can support where we can. Um, you know, I, I think that the families will come to Manona because it's a great place to raise a family. We have the wonderful parks, we have the community center, we have the fabulous library. Um, you know, I, my, my concern is that maybe our focus is just on bringing new families into Manona. Um, we have some residents that have been here for a long time and we want to keep them in their homes. And so, uh, Andrew talked about the Renew Manona program and, you know, we can utilize that program to keep our seniors in their homes. Um, you know, if, if replacing windows or, um, insulating their homes so that, uh, they can reduce their energy costs, um, will allow them to stay in their homes. You know, certainly, our senior population is an asset to our community and probably one of the reasons why it makes it so special and attractive to young families is this, um, diverse population and, um, we wouldn't want to just focus on one group, um, alone.
I won't skip you, Brian.
Okay. Um, so I think the families are here. Uh, people sell their homes before they even list them. Um, and the, the majority of the homes that are, are selling, there are new families. Every day I look outside and I'm like, who are these people? I don't know them. Um, and that's just happening more and more and more. So I, I don't think we're struggling attracting new families. What we're, uh, struggling with is owner occupied. Um, so if you go back and look at previous, um, census data, this used to be a very strong owner occupied, um, area, Manona. Many of these homes that are selling before they even hit the market are going into, uh, rental units and they are not necessarily owned by other residents. So they might be companies out of town, out of state, that are buying up, um, many of our residential homes and turning them over because they know that they can get top dollar for rental and they know that families are eager to be here because of the schools, the schools, the schools. And if you are a young family and you have, um, the amount of money that you have to get into a home, are you going to be here or are you going to go to Cottage Grove? People would rather be here, but they will choose to go to Cottage Grove because of the cost. So, we gotta do everything that we can from a zoning angle, as well as some other, um, strategies to encourage, uh, residents to be owner occupiers of their home.
Well, that's, uh, transitions into this question, which I hope maybe, um, the candidates will, will understand a little bit more than I do.
Maybe.
Andrew, where do you stand on the possibility of a school board referendum? And what is your opinion about the need for athletic facilities in Cottage Grove?
Hmm. Yeah, so this is, uh, an issue that I expected to be asked. Um, so, I mean, so I'm, my career, my professional career has been in higher education and schools are vital. Um, our educators and, you know, as Brian mentions, why do you move somewhere? A lot of the times it's schools, schools, schools. And I think they're important. So it's important to the fabric of the community, it's important to the vitality and the success of the community. And so, um, you know, I, I'm for a referendum to ask the residents what their thoughts are. I know it's going to be tricky in Manona because, um, of just kind of the past history and the fact that the building of a new school will be in Cottage Grove. I myself, uh, am certainly supportive of it because I do, uh, again, believe that, uh, you know, schools are, uh, a part of the quality of life, a part of, uh, living in a community and that's one reason why we moved here to start our family. Um, and so, uh, you know, it, it, it's a conversation I also want to learn more about. Uh, you know, they initially just started having these community conversations, uh, in Cottage Grove and Manona and so it's certainly still, I'm something open-minded about. But, you know, as far as a Manona representative, if elected, re-elected to city council, um, again, I believe it's, uh, vital to the success of the community to have a good school district.
Jennifer?
Um, well, I'm just learning about this, um, initiative. I attended, uh, one of the community listening sessions. Um, my daughter is looking at going to, um, Glacial Derrin School next year and so it's, um, of particular interest to me, um, the density of population at that school. And that's one of the things that this referendum is hoping to address. Um, and so I, um, support the, uh, referendum at this point. Um, I know that the question was in particular about the athletic fields. Um, and what I would say is that, um, when you're asking for, um, when you're asking for a referendum, when you're asking for the funds, um, it's good to lay everything on the table. Um, you know, I think that our, those facilities have been neglected for some time and... You know, I think that are, those facilities have been neglected for some time and athletic fields and sporting, sports in general for students is something that is an asset along with a good education. And so, making sure that we've got those facilities available to students makes our students more well-rounded. And so, I know that the price tag is, looks burdensome at this moment. I think I need more education on what that really is going to mean to our taxpayers. And so, I'm just learning, but at this point, at first glance, I think this is, the options that were presented to us were viable options and worth looking more into.
Brian?
I agree. I, I wish we had, you know, more control from a city council standpoint. I would love it, but we don't. The school board has to be the one that helps paint the picture, sell what it is that they are trying to communicate. The idea of these two communities sharing a school district, you know, a few miles apart, it's always daunting. I had, my daughter started here, went out to GDS and now is at the high school. You only miss the bus once. So, like, everybody here knows what I'm talking about, right? Your kid will miss the bus one time. After that, you know where the last bus stop in Manona is and you're going to high-tail it to that last, last bus stop. And so, you know, we, we've been out there, we walk the halls, we know what it, what the density is like and when you are filling every seat and then you have extras, you have to do something about it. It's a very difficult challenge. Like, we're going to be a fixed number here. We're not, you know, we're not going to have more and more kids here. You know, you might have two, three school-aged kids in one of our homes here. Unless we're changing the density of our housing here, the number of school-aged children in Manona will continue to stay pretty static. Cottage Grove is only going to grow. And so, as a partner in this effort, we need to look at how are we building facilities to meet the needs. At the same time, I have a school-aged child at Winnicott right now. Beautiful school. They did a wonderful job when we shifted students over from Maywood, which, yes, I was one that was a holdout and said, keep Maywood forever. And when we moved over to Winnicott, they did a wonderful job of turning that school into a 4K five school and we need that for all of our school-aged children across the district.
And Molly?
So, I was fortunate enough to be able to attend some of the facility advisory committee meetings that they were holding with community members and different representatives from the MGSD district last kind of winter, November, December. And I think, you know, the benefit of having these conversations is for community input as well as for a real examination of long-term growth, both of Cottage Grove and Manona and what that will look like as far as need for space in the district in the coming years. I think, you know, this is a concern that's come up quite a bit when I've been campaigning and I know it's on a lot of citizens' minds. I think the possibility of a referendum, a referendum is a tough sell. However, you know, as a product of public schools, as a public school educator, you know, I really do agree that, you know, a well-educated society is a healthier and better functioning community. And so, I think, you know, as long as we can be clear and transparent in helping communicate, you know, information about a potential referendum to the public, I think what people are really looking for is to really examine all of the possibilities about redevelopment of our existing, you know, school spaces in Manona as well as in Cottage Grove. Look at redevelopment first if we can, but I, it's likely that that option will not flesh out in a way that I think a lot of people are hoping. So, if a new building comes down the pike, I think to really be clear and transparent across the board and how specifically the spaces will be used and making sure that information is being communicated to our residents in a clear and understandable way will be beneficial in guiding them through and accepting the process of a referendum if it, if it happens. As far as the playing fields, you know, I, I don't have enough information about that specifically. I think my emphasis personally would be to make sure that we're improving facilities and making sure that every child has access to the schools and is able to learn in the environment without, you know, with as little restriction as possible. So, I, I don't have any input on the, on the playing field piece, I guess.
I think Jennifer starts our next round and the question is, what would you like to see as the future development for the San Damiano property on Manona Drive? What are the obstacles to achieve that future? What do you realistically think will happen there?
That's a big question. I love the property as it stands now. You know, in a perfect world, it would stay the way it is. It's a beautiful green space. You know, in a perfect world, we'd love to have a park there owned by the city, but financially, we know that that's probably just not in the cards for us. From what I understand, the property is valued at like $1.8 million or something. And so, for us as a city to, you know, purchase something like that, it may be just completely cost prohibitive. It's also kind of out of our control in terms of what goes on that property. If it's sold, it will likely be sold to a developer. And, you know, our hope is that it's not. I haven't heard any movement on that property. We're kind of in a holding pattern as far as I know. There's a caretaker and, that's living at that building on the property right now. Yeah, I, you know, I'm following it closely as I know many Manona residents are, some that, you know, live right up next to that property. And, you know, in a perfect world, it would be the next park in Manona, but I, I just don't know that that's within our cards. Certainly, as a city, we'd like to be at that table if, if it's possible to have that conversation. You know, certainly, they always say is if you're, you're not at the table, then you're on the menu. And so, my hope is that we can continue to communicate with the owners of the property and maybe guide how that property is sold. But certainly, that's, you know, it's also kind of out of the council's control.
Brian?
Yes. Yeah, control over what happens is a very difficult thing. Probably our best strategy is around zoning and how is it that we look at zoning in the area to allow the process to help influence how development takes place there. So, if it is turned over in a single party and they're looking at redeveloping that space into whatever they would want to turn that into, that we would use those channels as the way to influence how to move forward. So, if it's someone that's saying, boy, we want to take this property and create lots of smaller properties on it, you know, there's ways in which they have to divide up parcels and there are mechanisms within the city's control that we can influence how that happens. A single property that large, if it were to be divided, there'd be a lot of infrastructure that would need to go into that. And so, is that on the private developer's side or is that on a public side? So, there are ways that we have influence when and if that happens. Currently, I believe it's not on the market anymore. So, unless someone bought it in the room here that we don't know, we believe it's kind of a decision that will come at some point and we, as the city, will be eager to have that conversation with whoever comes forward.
Molly?
So, I have thought about this a lot and I know that there have been some sort of starts and stalls with the conversation about, you know, the city purchasing the land. I think in a dream world, we would have the ability to purchase the land and turn it into sort of a mixed private-public space. I think to maintain as much of the green space as possible would be wonderful. But then also, you know, a private retreat space where people could come and do meditation or other types of professional retreats, I think would be an excellent way to make sure that we're not overdeveloping that space or blocking the view of the lake, but it's a way to generate, you know, dollars. I also think to have some community garden space there. You know, there is already that little existing garden, which I think is just very beautiful and remarkable and adds a lot to that space. So, to expand upon or, you know, try to maintain that in some way, I think would be a wonderful use of that, of that green space as well.
Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, not to rehash what everybody has said, but I think, you know, Brian hits it where we could work with zoning as far as the city because that's something that's under our control. You know, my, my goal would be if and when it's ever sold is to work with whoever develops it to really have that shared public-private access. So, for example, in the riverfront, we have a park that's coming as a part of the development. And I would push for and expect a similar and/or, and larger access to the lake there because, you know, I'm a firm believer that, you know, Manona, we have this great lakeshore, but not everybody has access to it because not everybody lives there. And if we can provide more residents, more accessibility to that, it's all the better. So, I would work with, you know, whatever developers. And, you know, as far as what I would like seeing there, I have a lot of ideas, but certainly, who knows what would be possible. But, you know, as far as the city can do zoning and then working with the developer to have that public access and have a park there.
The next question, Brian will start. What new initiatives would you like to see Manona undertake that we are currently not doing?
Great question. I think this, I'm remembering back answering all of these forums in the written format that will be printed in the next few days likely. And I think I said no new initiative. The idea of, we have a lot on our plate. We have a ton on our plate right now. And we need to do what it is that we're doing right now and we need to not only just do it well, like, we gotta knock it out of the park here. So, we have the riverfront development going on. That's a major, major project. And that's, that's a very difficult project to have it come together. The mayor has done some amazing work on that and it takes a lot of time and energy for our elected officials as well as our city staff to do everything that needs to be done behind the scenes to make that happen. You pair that with the upcoming budget kind of dilemmas, those two pieces and then running the operations and looking forward to what capital improvements that we have in the city, that there is enough to keep us busy. So, adding new initiatives, if we're looking at doing something outside of what it is that's been laid out in front of us, you need to come with more staff and more money before you ask for any new initiative.
Molly?
So, you know, I think, you know, I think Brian raised some great points and obviously, there's a lot about, you know, the processes and procedures that I would need to learn if I were elected to city council. But, you know, something that I think would be simple and presumably low-cost would be just some sort of, you know, new resident initiative where when somebody new comes into the community, we use community partnerships and volunteers to really make sure we're reaching out to new residents, welcoming them into the city, making sure they know where their, you know, where City Hall is, where the library is, getting them their library card and registered to vote here, connecting them with other people in the community who might be able to sort of help integrate them in and learn more about how our, our community works. So, I think just a very simple sort of welcome wagon initiative in welcoming new residents would be a really positive way to encourage those lines of communication and, and connect people to each other.
Andrew?
So, I've already mentioned one. I think, you know, we can look at being 100% sustainable renewable energy for the city. But another thing, if anyone's talked to me relatively recently, I would get on my soapbox for Paid Family Leave, Paid Family Care. So, one of the things that opened my eyes to this aspect was hiring our new library director and just generally hiring for all across the city. And I think looking at, we can never always ma, I never always, we can't always match salary. So, we lose a lot of employees to Middleton, Wanakee, et cetera. And a lot of the times, there's a salary discrepancy. And so, what are other ways that the city could be attractive for new employees, also retain current employees? And I think taking a look at Paid Family Leave, Paid Family Care, which Dane County has already implemented, which Madison potentially will be implementing. Again, I think, you know, this is one way that Manona could lead by example and, you know, I don't think it would be too expensive and I think it, it would be a great thing for the city to have.
Jennifer?
So, I sit on the community media committee and that supports both our cable access channel and the radio station. And as you know, the radio station has just really taken off and is successful. And as part of that piece or the, as part of the radio station, the focus is on local stories. And I've been talking with our library director because he's looking to create a local story archive within our library. And so, we've been exploring ways to partner together utilizing our community media piece, our, our resources with community media to help record those stories. Manona has some really unique stories to tell and I think those stories actually could be turned around and used to benefit the city. We could use them in terms of tourism. You know, we've got these fantastic historical sites with the mounds that we have within Manona, historical mounds. We've got unique residents living here. We have lots of veterans living in Manona. And so, tapping into those stories and telling our Manona story. It creates community, it builds a sense of closeness and caring for your neighbor, you know, knowing where people stand. And so, I think that exploring that initiative would be something I'd be interested in.
Let's, this is the final question that I have from the audience unless any more have come in. What opportunities are available for the city to partner on various issues and who could potential collaborators be? And Molly would start this round. What opportunities are available for the city to partner on various issues and who could potential collaborators be?
Well, I know that Jen mentioned this organization earlier, but I think, you know, working with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities to really be exposed to best practices from across the state when it comes to, you know, our taxes and state imposed tax levy limits and to really be smart about how we're looking at the future of our budget system and how we put that together. To me, that one stands out right away as one that I think would be very useful and I'm, I'm glad to hear that some, you know, council members and other local leaders are already sort of trying to tap into that resource.
Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, excuse me. So, one of my hot topics this year was the dark store legislation and I think that kind of examples the shared partnership. So, whether it's working with Senator Miller or state legislators to be educate, more educated about the bills, working with our county leaders, working with Robin Schmidt or other county leaders as well as the league, I think, you know, that's a huge, I wouldn't say untapped, but a huge resource that we could expand a little bit further. I think additionally, kind of outside of that, the university, we did a university program here in Manona and we were the first people to pioneer that. And it was studying a lot of the initiatives and issues that we have within Manona and taking a look from a class perspective and then a practical perspective. And I think looking at that as an example, I think we have a lot of resources on campus as well that we could utilize, whether it's looking at bike-ped issues, whether it's looking at, you know, getting this dark store issue passed. I think there's a variety of things that we can look to and look on campus and then also with residents and leadership positions.
Jennifer?
I think if you've listened to me this afternoon, I think a lot of what I've talked about is partnerships. It's something that's very important to me. I think we need to look at creative community partnerships to solve a lot of our problems, be it with the county. The county's got some fantastic resources in terms of environmental protection, they've got some fantastic, fantastic resources in terms of mental health for our residents. I think that, as Andrew said, utilizing the services of the university, either through the formal university program or just with students, getting students connected with our city staff. Certainly, they benefit from getting real-world experience, working on initiatives, but then we benefit from, you know, having the support for our staff. And so, you know, I think there's, there's ways to creatively think about also partnering with local businesses, figuring out if there's things that we could be doing to support them and, you know, perhaps there's, you know, ways that they could be supporting us as a city. I think just getting at the table, having those conversations, building those relationships is really important. And I hoped that that's something that the council will take as a priority.
Brian?
We have a lot of current partnerships that exist and worked really well. So, Will and his crew, there's a unique partnership that we have with the school district and the city on how we carry out our community media, joint purchasing agreements that we have, so when we're buying all that salt and sand. have. So when we're buying all that salt and sand, that we're buying it in partnership with other communities to get the best deal we can for the citizens. When we go to buy a new vehicle, we're using the state purchase agreement, that we're using the strategies that we have as a municipality with others to do the work the best way we can. Some other partnerships that I think are not always tapped as well, there are things that we could be doing potentially with our school district to get students to be able to be actually engaged in either a work, so a joint aspect around how is it that they could get work as well as school credit. I point to Sun Prairie, that is employing their high school students to build their two new schools. So these students, after school, as part of their schooling, they're going and they're helping build the facilities. And not only are they earning money, which we all want, they're also earning credit and learning some, some great skills. And so I think we have a lot of things that we do in the city here, and we have a lot of students that are needing real, real-life opportunities, and that's a great way that we could partner that we haven't fully explored because we have a lean staff. And so I say that with the idea of no new initiatives with my last comment. This comes with a lot of groundbreaking kind of work that would come along with it. So it would have to be seen mutually as something important to try out on a small scale. And I saw my time was up, so.
Well, it's time now for closing statements, and we have a specific order for closing statements. We're kind of, start with Andrew and kind of go in a circular loop. Andrew, your closing statement.
Thank you again to Manona Community Media. Thank you, Joy, and thanks for everyone for coming out and watching on the streaming. I just want to leave you with the fact that I've really enjoyed the last two years serving as your alderperson. I believe I've been a visible representative in our community, attending events, volunteering for senior or rec center activities, and just being around and accessible to residents. I've been a vocal proponent for Manona because I love it on such issues as the dark store loophole, which will have a drastic impact on our small businesses and homeowners. I've had a track record of listening to all sides, taking up a variety of issues, and working to better Manona as a place to live, work, and play. I'm running for reelection because I can and I want to do more, if you're willing. Again, just to reiterate my three priorities, you know, ensuring we continue to have quality of services from public safety to rec center to senior center, promote responsible redevelopment by having a comprehensive plan for Broadway and Manona Drive, and then pushing Manona to lead by example, whether it's through sustainability initiatives or reviewing city, city employee benefits for paid family leave and paid family care. Now that I've had two years under my belt, I believe I can constructively address each of these issues. I hope that you see, I hope that you see my hard work and my passion for Manona, and I hope to have your support and your vote on April 3rd. Thanks again.
Thank you. And Molly is next.
Great. And I, you know, I want to echo Andrew's sentiments about just thanking the Manona Media Committee and to everyone who participated today and for accommodating me and calling in. I really appreciate it. I think I'm very uniquely qualified to be a leader in our local government. I've had a variety of professional and personal experiences that have prepared me and made me well-equipped to advocate on behalf of, solicit input from, and really represent a diverse array of stakeholders and community members. I've also really been actively working to prepare for this. You know, I've joined a couple of city committees and commissions and boards. I'm really interested in making that connection between, you know, the changing demographic of the younger families moving into town and our substantial senior population. Very invested in making sure that everyone feels clearly communicated to and engaged both civically and socially in our wonderful community. You know, I've been working on my campaign since January. I've knocked over 900 doors. I've met so many people, and I really want, you know, everyone present there and just anyone who's listening later to know that I care about what you have to say. I've taken extensive notes on the conversations I've had with, with city residents, and I care about what you care about. And so I would really look forward to bringing, you know, that younger perspective, bringing another, you know, female voice to the board, and just really making sure that we're bridging that communication gap between seniors and our younger residents, and just, you know, making sure that everyone feels like they are a part of our wonderful community. I would really look forward to that opportunity.
Brian?
Yeah, I thank everybody for coming out today and for Community Media and League for hosting and facilitating today. I find this is a better opportunity to have a conversation over the questions that you guys have. And I purposely didn't prepare a ton for opening and closing because I want to spend more time on just kind of keeping my mind clear and having the conversation. So I hope I answered all your questions. If there are any other questions that people have for me, feel free to reach out, and I will connect with you.
And Jennifer?
Well, as I've talked to you today, and for those of you that I've talked to outside of this venue, I think you've maybe heard that relationship building is important to me, and partnering is important to me. And with being on the council for only 10 months, I've worked hard to get up to speed and tried to build some of those relationships. And I'm really hoping that I can continue to do the work. I'm here to show up and do the work. I love the work. I love meeting with my community. I love having one-on-ones. I love hearing about why you love Manona. It's probably one of the reasons I love Manona, because everyone else does too. I want to continue to hear from my constituents for the balance of this term, and I hope to be able to continue to serve you. I want to make a commitment to keep listening. I want to think creatively and think about ways to move forward with partnerships with the county, partnerships with businesses. I want to push our communication strategy forward by partnering with other elders on this project and making sure that we're engaging our residents, both young and old, and making sure that we're protecting this resource that we have here. We've got fantastic parks, and we've got fantastic schools, and we want to maintain what Manona is. And so my hope is that I can continue to keep working for you and fighting for you on the council. So I am asking for your vote.
Well, let me thank the candidates for being here, Brian Holmquist and Jennifer Coor and Andrew Kitzler and Molly Groupi. Thank you to Will Nimmo and the Manona Community Media for putting all of this together. Thank you, audience, for coming here and participating and asking such great questions. The election is going to be on April 3rd. The League of Women Voters publication on the candidates' answers will be an insert in the ISMS publication on March 15th and also available at public libraries. And this concludes this forum, so time now for your applause. Thank you.